September eighth, twenty twenty five, seven p.m. Roll call.
Ulyta Checo?
Here.
Carlina Melendez? Susanne Corleble?
Here.
Al Toros? Anthony Camione?
Here.
Dana Lopez?
Here.
Zach Wright? Tom Flackwell? Megan Channini?
Here.
Bob Partico?
Here.
John Cox?
Here. Public announcement.
These are the notice of protest and the open public meeting act that comply with the satisfied annual notice which is petition notice that time this conflict all public meetings in the planning board of the city of New Brunswick, the public city clerk, the place of corporate bulletin board in the lobby of city hall, seven eight Bay Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and the transfer of official instructions to the city of New Brunswick, New Jersey.
Please stand up. Move your quiet. I quote the religious spirit of life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my ally, made visible, liberty, and justice for all.
The resolution of one more session?
Uh, we have a resolution to ask.
Public hearing, uh, B and B Holdings, two home used row, lot five ninety seven point oh six, lot twelve point oh seven, P B two oh two five oh four. The applicant has proposed to make the currently undeveloped warehouse into a new lot, a new lot warehouse and associated parking. This is a major site plan application with minor subdivision. The property is located from the I two zoning district, Thomas F. Garlet, that's right.
Good evening Chair. Uh, good to stand here.
Yeah. So, I'll just get your little. So, it's all good.
Uh, good evening Chair, members of board. My name is Tom Scarlett, who are from Brooklyn, New York. We're here on behalf of the applicant, uh, listed as B and B Holdings, uh, in one of our revisions, we also noted that there's a single net, uh, singular thing here that's, uh, New Brunswick Home Used Row, obviously, that's the property that was provisioned in one of our subdivisions. Um, we're here tonight seeking preliminary final, uh, subdivision, major subdivision, as well as preliminary final site plan approval for warehouse structure on the property located at two home used row near New Brunswick, which is block five, currently blocked, five hundred ninety seven point zero six, lot twelve point zero seven. Uh, the property is located in the I two general industrial zone, you district with those warehouses used, committed use. Uh, currently, and we'll get to one of these exhibits here, but just for purposes of showing the board, the parcel already has a warehouse structure located on it, from Triangle Road, at the corner of Triangle Road and New Home, uh, New Home Used Row. I have a lot of problems with that. I apologize. Uh, I've been trying to work on it for two months now. Um, so, as, as the board can see toward the rear of the building, which, uh, the property, which is going to front, home news road, that right, uh, is where our new structure is, is proposed. Uh, no changes are proposed to the existing warehouse or what will be the new lot where that existing warehouse is located. What we are proposing, uh, is a, uh, is a two hundred, uh, twenty four thousand, six hundred and ninety square foot warehouse building on, this is the proposed lot, uh, which will also include manings and vehicle parking stalls, uh, one which will be E B ready and one which will be A D A compliant, four loading docks, one drive-in ramp, uh, and bicycle parking as well as noted on the site plan. Uh, we are seeking major subdivision rule because we trigger one C variance of site areas, so it's going to designate a major subdivision that we are proposing two lots as whole. Um, in terms of that C variance, uh, we are requesting the variance report, uh, for, uh, loading docks in front or your ordinance requires screening for those loading docks. We're not proposing screening, uh, as we'll have some testimony from our engineer. This property is an industrial zone, it is neighboring industrial buildings, other warehouse buildings. Uh, we feel that what's proposed today in terms of that lack of screening, uh, the, the benefits to the zone property and, uh, upholding the zoning of the property outweighs any detriment intended to draw some, uh, similar uses. We've got two witnesses for you tonight, our civil engineer Mitch Summitt, uh, from Waring McComb, as well as our architect, John Green, uh, Cernera Architect. Uh, we're receiving board engineering, board planners reports, which were recently updated, uh, Friday, fifth, and today respectively. Uh, we're happy to address this as well. With that, I'm ready to call my first witness unless the board has any questions.
I just have a lot of, I don't think that's where, any member of the board have any conflicts with this application? Seeing that, I, please swear the first witness.
Thank you Chair, I'd like to call Mitch Summitt.
You'll at least state your names, but your last name for the record?
Yeah, uh, my name is Mitchell Summitt, S U M M I T T.
Do you swear for Ernst Stahl? Would you have the truth?
I swear. Um, I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering in two thousand and twelve, and I graduated from Stevens Institute of Technology with a Master's in Civil Engineering in twenty twenty two. I'm not sure if there's other credentials.
Do you have, uh, any experience appearing before any zoning board, like any boards?
Yes, I've appeared before boards in the past.
I'd have to, well, tell them as they're actually a public engineer.
Thank you Chair.
Uh, Mr. Summitt, could you take the board, uh, through the subdivision plan that's proposed as well as our site plan, uh, that's proposed before the board tonight?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, uh, just, I guess, to save a little time, because Tom ran down pretty good, did a good rundown of the existing conditions plan, which is kind of shown here. I think the only other thing that I would add is that this site is located in both the, the D R C C stream corridor, as well as the N G T P flood hazard area down in this area in the south, um, which are shown, probably difficult to see of course, but they're, they're shown on, on these plans and it's something that, that I'll address when I get into it. But I think, aside from that, uh.
Just one quick question, I have purposes of the record in the board, uh, the plan that you're referencing, uh, was previously submitted to the board. Uh, this particular.
Exact, one was not, but there was an existing conditions plan submitted as part of the site plan application.
Did you point out as A one, if today is A on, please?
Yes.
Tomorrow.
I did it.
Just, just identify, uh, if there's any kind of identification date, revision date for the one.
Yeah, we go existing conditions. It's dated yesterday, so, seven.
So, existing conditions, uh, edited for September seventh, twenty twenty five. That's A one.
Thank you. And now we got that, we're ready to go on from existing conditions and show, kind of, coding here, so.
Identify that for the board.
Yes.
Was that previously submitted?
Just examples on.
So, just identify that and I just, it would mark A two.
And this would be A two, so this is the proposed, um, exhibit showing the, the color rendering from out of the building, the color rendering of the site line.
We can mark, no mark at the end.
Sounds good.
Does it say revision date?
Yes, yeah, dated yesterday, so, December. Um, as Tom mentioned, we're proposing to construct a twenty four thousand, six hundred and ninety square foot warehouse building, associated parking on the currently undeveloped portion, currently undeveloped half of the lot twelve oh seven. And as you can see, hopefully, you can see this, this dark, this dark black line here is the proposed subdivision line, which would split the parcel, the existing twelve oh seven parcel roughly in half, um, leaving the existing distribution warehouse untouched as it is, and developing the, the currently undeveloped portion of the lot into what's, what's shown here today and what we're about to be doing today. Uh, this is a speculative development, there's no ten currently, and so that'll be, um, something that we look forward to getting hopefully into each other. Um, the project complies with all the general industrial I two, um, bulk loading criteria, retail yard setbacks and, and lot area setbacks that is outlined in the zoning code. There is however, as Tom mentioned, one C variance that we're going for, as you can see and you mentioned previously, the, the section seventeen point oh five oh three zero states that any dock or delivery shipping platform located in the front yard shall be screened for public view from all streets. And as you can see here, the proposed loading dock is located directly in front of our, our access, and the reason that we feel that this, this warrants a, um, the variance is that, uh, a lot of this size, realistically with a building this size, um, the maneuverability of, of trucks to get in and out and not in front of your, your entrance point is very difficult. And so, if you try to screen it over here, just the truck movements themselves for a front loaded building become very cumbersome and difficult to maneuver. Initially, when we looked at this site, we were actually hoping and planning to do a rear loaded building, but once we got into it a little bit further, realized that we have the, the D R C C stream corridor, as well as the F H A back there, that kind of became a nonstarter because we just couldn't get, and we weren't able to develop any of this, this area down here in that area, so. Um, those are the reasons that we're pursuing the C variance for the lack of screening in front of the, the loading dock that's in the front of the building. So, getting into a little bit to vehi- vehicular access and circulation, um, as mentioned already, the project proposes one access and E B S driveway entrance along home news row. Um, this, this, uh, driveway width is roughly forty five feet. And then, per discussion with, uh, Deputy Chief Stellatella, the fire department, there's, there's also a fire lane back here. Um, this, we, we went back and forth with the fire department on this one, um, they needed a twenty eight foot wide lane, and because, as I mentioned already, in the F H A and the D R C C stream corridor, we wanted to get this to be potentially a, um, a pervious system, and, but, you know, with the fire department's requirements, they had certain, um, stabilization structural requirements needed for that road, and so we kind of came to compromise and proposed in our site plan application, uh, a geo grid that's filled with, with hard stone that provides that structural stability. Um, I just kind of wanted to point that, because this area actually is, and it's a different color, I want me to get this different color on here, to show that that's actually not part of the circulation at all, that'll be gated off only for emergency use should, should it be needed, hopefully never needed, but should be needed. Um, and really, everything is up here in the front, so trucks drive in, they pull over here to, in front of the, the parking area, and they're able to back in, and then pull right out. And everything back here is strictly for emergency access only, but will be maintained to put her up. All right, moving on. As Tom mentioned, uh, the development proposes nineteen parking stalls, which is, um, three more than the requirement from zoning, which is total sixteen. There's an E B ready stall proposed here, which is A D A, which means A D A requirements was not actually signed for A D A, so that, um, everyone's able to use it, not just, um, not just someone with A D A necessities, but then the A D A stall is, is right there. There are thirteen bike loops over here per the zoning code, and there are four proposed loading docks, which is again greater than the requirement to, for the zoning code. Stormwater management, not really shown here, it's underground, but, uh, there's a large underground stormwater system up here, Plan North, which handles all of the detention for this site. Uh, all the roof detention, as well as any of the impervious area here eventually goes into that system where it's detained and, and meeting all the reductions required by N G T P, as well as the town code, and eventually discharges per the natural topography and natural stormwater conveyance is, is from Plan Northwest to Plan Southeast. And there is a discharge point via pipe discharge and its conduit protection and out, and a turbine section down in that location to maintain the, the natural flow path. Um, water quality is achieved by, by a combination of porous pavement in this portion of the parking lot, as well as a manufactured treatment device that is, is underneath the tree that's shown there, the treatment device itself will look like a tree, but underneath it there's a bunch of bio pots and everything like that. And lastly, with regard to groundwater recharge for stormwater requirement, um, this, well, this, this location is booked in, in Planning Area One, so groundwater recharge is not required. And then per geotechnical testing, it is, soil is not feasible for groundwater recharge, it's classical soil, um, it's also not feasible for infiltration, which is one of the reasons why we had to change our design early, from flower retention basin to that underground system that you see here, which is lines, it will not infiltrate it because it won't go anywhere, the soil is bad and there's rock, I'm too far down. Oh, and then I guess lastly for, for stormwater management that I'd like to address is just that, as much important, it's in the D R C C stream corridor, as well as the N G T P flood hazard area, and so in addition to Mr. Ingram's review for, for engineer, um, those agencies will be our stormwater designs also. Uh, signage, there's no proposed signage for the future tenant, desire signage, they would have to apply for that, um, aside from just, um, numbering, so it may only have confinement, but no, no tenant signage because it's also a speculative building. So, for utilities, there are proposed two new water connections, um, all, all proposed connections, utility connections are in home news row, are only fronted, so it makes sense, but there's, uh, one domestic water and one firewater proposed, um, from the city infrastructure, and then the one natural gas and one electrical proposed from P S E G. And all of those, just for, um, for the record, come out kind of on this, this western side of the building and then build up here and are mainly centered around that corner. Right, landscape even screening, as you can see, we, uh, we're doing our best to maintain the landscape, landscape buffer around the site, around perimeter of the site. The idea with the landscape design was to marry as much as possible the existing wooded area with the proposed, you know, perimeter buffering, um, so when we get down in this area, this will be more of our, we're not actually touching the existing wooded area, and that'll just kind of blend back in, and then on the sides, kind of, we eventually just kind of merge it back in. Um, but overall, again, you have these, um, large trees creating the buffer around the perimeter, and then your smaller shrubs and grasses and everything, creating a nice area, um, along the, the sides of the buildings and along the, the perimeter of the drive out. Uh, there's a total proposed plantings of twenty six trees, hundred eighty seven shrubs, and a nice lawn mix, less than a good lawn mix of Kentucky bluegrass and perennial rock grass or anything like that. Um, and then with respect to lighting, the plan proposes compliant lighting design consistent of a combination of pole and building mounted fixtures, and all these fixtures are downward facing and dark start compliant. And, well, close to last, there's, uh, regarding solid waste management, there's proposed trash recycling enclosure up here in kind of that Plan, Plan Northeast, and, and that trash enclosure is, is, both has masonry and landscaping screening around it, as you can see with landscaping around it, but it also has, um, a little bit of a masonry structure just to hide it from you. And then, as mentioned previously, there is currently no tent, so, um, the, the end user will eventually have to contract local haulers for recycling and solid waste. And per the town ordinance, we have submitted a trash recycling report, um, which is compliant with the town's zoning code.
Which is what, I'm sorry?
Compliant with the town's zoning code, sorry, I'm a hoarder. I have it bad. Yeah, I think other than that, there's nothing specific items that I really need to walk through. I, I mean, you just received, um, the letter, um, dated September fifth from the board engineer, and as well as one from, from the planning department, and we went through that and went through it, and none of the comments jumped out at us, and we were surprised. Um, I think we're happy to go through and answer any specific ones, but other than that, I would just say that, that we're planning to comply with, with the comments that were provided to us, and, um, are understanding that, you know, our eventual approval is contingent on, on trusting those comments as well as providing all the necessary outside aid and security.
Have you any other questions, Mr. Summitt? Thank you, Mr. Summitt. If there's any other questions for this witness, if any, if any member of the board, board professional has any questions for this witness? Seeing none, you can ask what this is.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to call John Manino. Last witness is our, our, just going to take the board.
Please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
John Manino, M A N I N O. Do you swear for Ernst Stahl? Would you have the truth? Yes. John Manino, principal owner and Cernera Architect, uh, two two four Courtyard, graduate of New Jersey. Um, graduate of Philadelphia College of Textiles and Science, exchanged names many times since I graduated, uh, and, uh, testified in kind of this board and various other boards, uh, across six states, so.
Well, except to the next board, thank you.
Okay, um, on the easel is, uh, drawing A one, which is a copy of what, what we received by board, Tom, just presenting this just to get a reference on the building plan, briefly go over the plan, I think Mitchell and Tom have already touched on the building as a whole, approximately twenty five thousand square feet, single story, um, it's a small, approximately twenty four hundred square foot, uh, office space in the northwest corner, um, and the remaining will be warehouse, approximately twenty two thousand square feet or so. equipped with four loading docks, each loading bay is approximately fourteen feet wide and one drive-in, uh, one drive-in ramp, all facing towards the north. Um, the building itself, uh, complies with thirty two foot clear height, and would be equipped with an E S F R fire suppression system, so it will support billing, um, and, uh, similar to the site, site lighting, L E D lighting, uh, a white T P L roof for, for energy and some green energy aspects, um, and, uh, you know, high efficiency H V A C.
I'm sorry, high efficiency?
H V A C, that's what we're discussing. That's just a highlight on the plan. Any questions on the board? In lieu of the elevation that are received to the board on the application, we prepared a three D colorized rendering of the building, um, that is dated main entry and loading docks, September ninth, twenty twenty five, and this would be labeled as exhibit A three. What was it, September nine? Okay, um, so, this is a three D, uh, digital rendering of the building as proposed. Um, it is, uh, again, this is facing, looking mainly from the main entry onto the site. There's your four loading docks and your drive-in ramp and your main office entry over this northwest corner. Um, as typical with these type of buildings, it's going to consist of, uh, precast concrete wall panels, um, various different color tones of gray with a dark blue, uh, accent consisting with the applicants kind of, uh, variations of palette that they use in some of their other buildings. Any questions?
Can we just correct? Correct the date to the.
All right. Have you else got?
We're not coming back to this.
Any questions on the? There was one comment I want to touch on, on the engineer's report, had to do with the retaining wall, uh, it's a question about this retaining wall along the drive-in ramp, it's slightly over four feet, uh, in fact, it's four foot, four inches at the, at the head of the wall where it engages the wall. Um, there was a question about the design of the retaining wall, we typically take on the design of this retaining wall as it engages our building, so it would be a part of our structural designs for the building itself, uh, so that's one of the structural designs for the retaining wall would be prepared. Uh, I know it was your question, I would possibly prepare those ahead of time as part of the, uh, condition of the approval, but that is, because it engages a wall, it is typically part of our foundation design, we don't, not, not as, uh, structural design.
I don't have any further questions. Any member of the board, board professional, have any questions for this witness? Seeing none. I've been waiting for the witnesses, I know there's a bigger, uh, application behind this, I'll keep it very short, I think that it was presented to the boards, but, or some very small variations from the zoning ordinance associated with the screening and submission waivers, we're presenting you with a, uh, compliant warehouse structure in the water zone, the I two zone. Um, we've met pretty much every single request in your ordinance, again, but for those small deviations, and we'd ask the board, uh, to consider, uh, approval tonight, with those, would that make it acceptable?
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like you to open up to the public, any member of the public is here who should comment or speak on this application, please come forward. Seeing that I'm going to close the public portion, um, if you have, uh.
Conditions?
Conditions, please.
Should the board act favorable, the following conditions shall apply, compliance with the terms and conditions for all associates report dated September fifth, twenty twenty five, it's admission of all necessary easements and a process cross-access agreement for review and approval by the board attorney and city engineer, file prior to filing, same, payment of a site performance bond in an amount for unit approved by the city engineer, submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in an amount capitally pursuant to title sixteen point two four, point oh six zero, payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to title sixteen point oh four, thirteen point oh eight, issuance of a road opening permit from city engineer required, compliance with the terms of the city planning report dated September eighth, twenty twenty five, uh, mandatory monetary contribution to cities tree preservation trust fund in amount to be required by title eight point four eight, uh, planning review escrow funded for all anticipated post approval reviews.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I'm still, I'm, I'm sorry.
Planning review escrow funded for all anticipated post approval reviews, payment of any other fees due to the city of New Brunswick related to development or use of this project, payment of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees, Middlesex County planning board approval or waiver, D and R canal commission approval or waiver, Prehold Soil Conservation District approval or waiver, um, filing of subdivision in accordance with the MAP filing act, applicant shall provide documentation confirming that they have contacted city's tax assessor to obtain the correct new block and lot parcel designations and street addresses that will appear on the city's tax map and tax list if the application is approved and implemented. Applicant shall provide proof that copies of any required new deeds have been reported with the county clerk, and that copies of the reported deeds have been provided to the city's tax assessor, and that the tax assessor, tax assessor is satisfied with the form and content of the deeds. Submit engineering site plan to approve, uh, to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or planning amendments offered at the hearing, submit our technical plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or planning amendments offered at the hearing, execution of the title thirty nine park enforcement agreement, uh, all utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense, all on-site utilities to be constructed underground, will temporarily approached and sent to the public right of way, shall require city council approval, off-construction stages shall be done on-site, less than approach and allowing into the public right of way is approved by city council, streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris, the applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned, direct to do so by director of public works, tracking patch shall be installed at off-construction exits, replacement of damaged streets, curves, and sidewalks as per the direction of the city engineer, and we'd have one C variance for, uh, the screening of the loading base.
Motion to approve with the conditions evaluated by, uh, Mr. Menendez.
You file second? Ulyta Checo?
Yes.
Susanne Corleble?
Yes.
Anthony Camione?
Yes.
Dana Lopez?
Yes.
Megan Channini?
Yes.
Bob Partico?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you all. Okay, this is, uh, application, sixty eight Hill Street, L L City, forty seventh Ray Street, block eighty three, lot four point oh one, P B two oh two five dash oh five. The applicant proposes to project site, located in R five K Scott C A O zoning district, three-story multifamily building, that is currently a two and a half story single family dwelling. This application is considered a major site plan, the application, applicant seeking relief for C and D variances, Tom Douglas?
Members of the board, Thomas F. Council, on behalf of the applicant, sixty eight Hill Street, L L City, I always like it on the project, it's a different address than the address we use in the, uh, listening, very confusing, it's a box, always special. All right, first person, uh, we just want to just confirm, uh, what the chair said, uh, the application is for preliminary final site plan approval with variances to the construction, a little rise residential building consisting of four five-bedroom units and a, uh, rear E car service parking lot. Uh, I want to just, a little bit of background first, note. There's also a refuse area with a number of bins in it on the left-hand corner, and then this portion of the building on the left is also a utility space that allows access out to the driveway, to the travel space. So overall, we have eight parking stalls, and the newer ordinance allows one parking stall for every four occupants in maximum occupancy. The proposed building has a total of four or five parking units. Occupancy is 20, so the resulting parking requirement would be five, nothing else would provide. Again, maximizing utility of that impervious surface if we have to, if we have to propose. The site also has testimony of the planning. So we have five building-mounted lighting fixtures. I believe they're all compliant with the city ordinance for lighting. They will provide category situating along the driveways and near the property, and there's also two smaller residential-style acorn-style fixtures in front of the property, slightly more decorative. The landscaping, as noted, Mr. Kelson had identified that he would park landscaping along the front of the building. The windows, these zones stand here, sorry, the engineers stand here, would require planks surrounding the building that's in entirety. We are not providing planks in the parking lot or along the driveway. And then on the right-hand side of the property, we have, we'll have a fence that will extend down to the front corner of the building. Actually, that fence will extend all the way around the entirety of the property. The intent is to set up to be a six-foot, we're on board fence that will obscure, screen parking area and amenities for many of the properties, and as a result, providing additional buffering and landscaping between the fence and the building doesn't seem a particularly good use of those planks. We're providing two street trees, as is required, and just to start with utilities for the point. We're going to be bringing in new water sanitary, new water and sanitary lines, and that includes a fire and a domestic line. There was some, there were comments in the engineering foretest of the sizing of that line, final sizing for the fire service, and then the appropriate engineer who designed that specific system is brought in, and that would afford the building carpet and fire setup as would be required. There's also a drywall proposed on the property, and that is at sort of the mouth of the driveway as it approaches to the street. The intent is to capture runoff from the parking area and in a trench drain where it would otherwise leak the property, and send that water back into a drywall located on the site. I believe this is designed according to the city standards, the storm control ordinance, and we would certainly work with the engineer to provide reference of information and details necessary for that to confirm this. In overflow condition, we've got too much water, more than 100 use storm, where the drywall isn't going to function with that volume of water. The safe overflow is provided for a pipe through an air line just downstream of this driveway, and then even worse case than that, it's still just coming out the driveway and we're going on the sidewalk, and at that point, we're just talking about the lottery. We're going to have a rainfall of that, a similar system probably would have been designed.
A similar system?
A similar system would not have been. So I touched on the driveway width, so the parking lot, just to identify the parking doesn't need to be minimal setback of three feet. We have along the rear and along the right-hand or west side of the property. We are short of the three-foot standard, design standard. I believe I covered, and that actually, I think that's also a buffering requirement, which is again, a standard, we need a waiver front, rather than, again, plant, plant things behind the fence line, which would provide, which would appropriately screen the use from the adjacent properties. Another thing that comes up occasionally is a question regarding the air condenser units. There are none. They are going to be in the, I couldn't speak to the specifics of it, but they're going to be PTEC systems, and there's going to be no physical mechanical equipment located outside of the property. There also is going to be a transformer on this lot. The building is just not that big. I believe that I've covered those things that would need to be covered.
Now, Frank, you have had an opportunity to review the city engineer's report, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything in that report that is an issue for you or that we cannot comply?
No. I believe we comply with the conditions and the comments made in your report.
Any further questions? Mr. Farrell?
Any member of the board, board preservers have any questions for this one?
What about the recommendation in the big now report inserting the single entrances opposed to the two separate entrances?
I believe the architect can speak to that more specifically, but providing all four units, all 20 people in and out through one door, seems like it would be better off shared amongst three groups. And that's mostly a front facade, but again, if the architect can speak to that.
Not going in there, sir. We'll address that.
The architect also addressed the questions about what each of these units is going to contain, just in case five bedrooms for each unit.
Yes. I'm the building out. He's the building in.
Is the garbage private or city?
I believe it's city.
I believe it's city.
It'll be brought out in the official.
Any other questions? Seeing that, please go ahead and witness.
At this time, I will call Mr. Pedro Rosario.
Can you please take your names, sort of last name for the record?
Pedro Rosario, last name R.O.S.D.A.R.
Do you swear a function of the whole truth? I do.
You have been before this board before, correct?
Correct.
Since the last time you appeared before this board, having credentials changed in any way?
No.
We'll accept you as the next word and part of it.
Thank you.
Pedro, if you can, then please give us a general overview architecturally about the buildings. Obviously, we want you to talk about the interior, address the questions specifically that will ask from the board, and give us a general overview of the building and its development, its design and project.
Okay. All right. So we are proposing a two-story building with four apartment units, totaling approximately 5,951 square feet. Each apartment comprises of five single occupancy bedrooms, to answer your question, two bedrooms, laundry closet, and the two first-floor level units are ADA adaptable units. Package room, which is unit A and B. Also, we have a package room and utility room, accessed, access from the outside, package room and utility room, onto the left side of the building, along the driveway, which is on the left side. Also, we're proposing a bicycle rack with four loops to the right side of the building. We don't currently show a roof overhang on the plans, but we will add a three-foot overhang off of the side of the building, to the outermost right side of the building. The first floor level.
Otherwise, we would have been providing a 24-foot wide driveway where this 24 feet is compliant. But we felt this is a better use of the asphalt. And that relates back to the impervious coverage standards. So we're maximizing to the extent that we can the usability of any impervious coverage that we provide. The site will have ADA access and an ADA parking spot to the rear, where there's also two DVD spaces. The accessible route is shown on the plan where an individual could park in this stall, traverse up the driveway, and then into the front of the building, which is the D access. There's three doors in the front of the building to provide access to the residential units. There's a blank roof, which will be covered on the right-hand side of the building, and that's except access from a small sidewalk that skirts around the right-hand side of the building there from the front. There's also a refuse area with a number of bins in it on the left-hand corner. And then this portion of the building on the left is also a utility space that allows access out to the driveway space. So overall, we have eight parking stalls. And the newer ordinance allows one parking stall for every four occupants in maximum occupancy. The proposed building has a total of four or five occupants. Occupancy is 20, so the resulting parking requirement would be five. None of us will provide any. Again, maximizing the utility of that impervious surface if we have to propose it. The site also has... So we have five building-mounted lighting fixtures. I believe they're all compliant with the city ordinance for lighting. They will provide category situating along the driveways and rear of the property. And there's also two smaller residential-style acorn-style fixtures in front of the property, slightly more decorative. The landscaping, as noted, Mr. Kelso had identified that you could park landscaping along the front of the building. The ordinance... these zones stand here, sorry, the engineers stand here. Would require plantings surrounding the building that's in its entirety. We are not providing plantings in the parking lot or along the driveway. And then on the right-hand side of the property we have, will have a fence that will extend down to the front corner of the building. Actually, that fence will extend all the way around the entirety of the property. The intent is to set up to be a six-foot, we're on board fence that will obscure, screen, parking area, amenities for many of the properties. And as a result, providing additional buffering and landscaping between the fence and the building doesn't seem particularly good use of those plantings. We are providing two street trees, as is required. And let's touch on utilities for a second. We're going to be bringing in new water sanitary lines. Now that includes a fire and a domestic line. There was some... there were comments in the engineering report as to the sizing of that line and final sizing for the fire service. I'm not sure when the appropriate engineer who designed that specific system is brought in and out before the building carpet and fire setup as we get through. There's also a drywall proposed on the property, and that is at sort of the mouth of the driveway as it approaches to the street. The intent is to capture runoff from the parking area and in a trench drain right before it was otherwise linked to the property and send that water back into a drywall located on the side. I believe this is designed in accordance with the city standards, the control ordinance. And we would certainly work with the engineer to provide reference of information and details necessary for that to confirm this. In an overflow condition, we've got too much water, more than 100 use over the drywall isn't going to function with that volume of water. The safe overflow is provided for a pipe through the air line just downstream of this driveway. And then even worse case than that, it's still just coming out the driveway, but we're going on the sidewalk. And at that point, we're just talking about the lottery. We're going to have a rainfall event that a similar system probably wouldn't have been designed. A similar system would not have been designed. I touched on the driveway. So the parking lot, just to identify the parking, does it make a minimal setback to three feet? We have along the rear and along the left-hand or west side of the property. We are short of the three-foot standard, design standard. And that actually, I think that's also a buffering requirement, which is again a standard. We need a waiver front rather than, again, plant things behind the fence lining with the provided fence, which would appropriately screen the use from the adjacent properties. Another thing that comes up occasionally is a question regarding the air conditioning units. There are none. They are going to be in the... I couldn't speak to the specifics of it, but they're going to be PTEC systems. And there's going to be no physical mechanical equipment located outside of the property. There are also basically going to be a transformer on this lot. The building is just not that big. I believe that I've covered those things that would need to be covered.
Frank, you have had an opportunity to review the city engineer's report, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything in that report that is an issue for you or that we cannot comply with?
No, I believe we comply with the conditions and the comments made in your testimony.
Any further questions? Please, Mr. Farrell?
Can you remember the board, board professional, have any questions for this one?
What about the recommendation in the big now report inserting the single entrances opposed to the two separate entrances?
I believe the architect can speak to that more specifically. But providing all four units, all 20 people in and out through one door seems like it would be better off shared amongst three persons. And that's mostly a front facade. But again, if the architect can speak to that.
Not going in there, sir. We'll address that.
The architect also addressed the questions about what each of these units is going to contain. Just if it's five bedrooms for each unit.
Yes. I'm the building out.
He's the building in.
Is the garbage private or city?
I believe it's city.
I believe it's city.
It'll be brought out in official.
Any other questions? Same amount, please go ahead and witness.
If there's some, I will call Mr. Pedro Rosario.
Can you please take your names for our last name for the record?
Pedro Rosario. Last name R O S D E T O.
Can you score our first couple of signatures?
I do.
You have been before this board before, correct?
Correct.
Since the last time you appeared before this board, having credentials changed in any way?
No.
We'll accept you as the next member in our party.
Thank you.
Pedro, if you can, then please give us a general overview architecturally about the buildings. Obviously, we want you to talk about the interior, address the questions specifically that will ask from the board. And give us a general overview of the building and its development, its design and project.
All right. So we are proposing a two-story building with four apartment units totaling approximately 5,951 square feet. Each apartment comprises of five single occupancy bedrooms. To answer your question, two bedrooms, laundry closet and the two first-floor level units are ADA adaptable units. Package room, which is unit A and B. Also, we have a package room and utility room. Access from the outside, package room and utility room, onto the left side of the building along the driveway, which is on the left side. Also, we're proposing a bicycle rack with four loops to the right side of the building. We don't currently show a roof overhang on the plans, but we will add a three-foot overhang off of the side of the building to the outermost right side of the building. The first floor level comprises of proposes an entry porch on the front with three different entrances to the apartments. The left entrance is to unit A and the right side to unit B. And the front entrance, the center entrance is to a stairwell leading to the second floor to units C and D.
While you run that subject...
Yes, I have to try to answer and anticipate the question.
Why is that configuration better than having one entrance? And how that would impact the design of the building? What you would need to do?
Okay, so the three different entrances, we felt that it was safer from an E-BUS standpoint. Instead of having 20 people using one door in the case of an emergency, we have obviously five people from unit A, five people from unit B. And then 10 people from units C and D come down the stairwell and onto the street. So it's mainly for safety reasons that we felt it would be safer.
And if you were to do a single entry, how would that impact? What would you need to do and how would that?
We would have to create essentially a vestibule here, a bigger vestibule with entrances to unit A and unit B. So unit A and B shown on the plans are essentially mirrored images. And they're both ADA accessible units. They feature an open floor plan with a kitchen, dining and living area, common area, which is about 396 square feet. There are two bedrooms on this level, bedroom number one and two on the rear of the building. Same thing for unit B, obviously. And one bathroom, which is also being accessible for each unit. There is an interior staircase that leads up to the second floor for unit A, which has three additional bedrooms and one bathroom. And on the first floor, we also have a laundry closet. The second floor level, unit C and D on the front, have common areas in the front. Again, with interior staircases, stairwell going up to the third floor where all the bedrooms are located, which is five bedrooms. Two in the front and three in their rear. This second, this third floor also includes a laundry closet and two bathrooms. Units A and B are approximately 1,431 square feet. And units C and D are approximately 1,410 square feet. The apartment units will be conditioned with PTEC units, a sprinkler and fire alarm system that is required for the building. The whole building would be built on slab-on-grade foundation, where the first floor entrance is right on grade, which allows the building to be able to... The exterior proposes hardy plank lap siding with PVC trend and vinyl plaid windows. The roof will be asphalt shingles with metal roof finish for the porch. And PVC columns and freeze boards are proposed for the entry porch. And you'll see it in the rendering next sheet. Each floor will have a eight-foot ceiling height. And the proposed building height is 33 feet seven inches. And this is the rendering, color rendering of the proposed...
Should have shown that first.
Is that part of the surveying in the plans that was submitted?
It is not.
So you should, you know, have to mark that.
Able.
Able.
Sorry, able. On the rendering?
No.
Maybe tonight? Any other questions for Abel?
And remember, the board, board professionals have any questions for this?
Mr. Chair, if I could just to clarify something, Mr. Kelso. I think the testimony that we just heard was in response to one of the comments in the plan report about a front porch. That a front porch would be in the... So right now on the engineering plans, you've got a 10-foot front setback. And on the architectural plans, there's a porch that's shown that's not shown on the engineering plans. So if that porch gets added on because it's under a roof, it's three feet deep that it's going to get into the front facade of the building. So that porch is going to create a front setback, not conformity of seven feet where 10 feet is required.
Careful, the roof by cantilever in the roof, three feet? So the variance required, my understanding is that there's a column that's going to hold up that front porch. But if it's cantilevered, use cornices, another similar features, bay windows and whatnot that protrude from the actual physical face of the building and exempted under the city's ordinance for front door.
So it would be a three-foot projection from the building?
It would be a three-foot projection if we propose it as a cantilevered overhang at the top of three feet, which rather than to that, it's a variance of seven.
Let me just double check on that to see if that's conception.
Any other... have any questions? Do you want us to wait or come back?
No, please go ahead.
Go on, I'll go back. Please, probably next question.
Just have a clone, so Allison Coffin for testimony.
Can you please say your names for the last name for the record?
Yes, Allison Coffin. See you all that time.
You scored our first couple of votes, if I'm correct.
Yes, I did.
Ms. Coffin, you have been before this board before, correct?
Yes, I have and I'm still licensed.
And your credentials haven't changed at all, correct?
Allison, if you could please give us an overview of the variances that are being sought in the design waivers to the extent that it's appropriate to do that from a planning perspective. And hopefully, through your testimony, you can support the variances of waivers that are being requested. And you could touch upon, if you will, what I... in regards to the elimination of parking spaces.
Sure, so the lot is zone R5A, the residential zoning district. And it has been within the College Highway District in the early life. There was a recent ordinance adopted by the city, that's ordinance 072501. And that made some changes that would have impacted this application. Under that new ordinance, it eliminates the parking variance that we're looking at. I think it may also eliminate the lot width, because I don't see a lot width requirement in the new ordinance. Which leaves the applicant with variance relief for the lot area, for the side yard setback, for impervious coverage. And there's some waivers being requested for the parking lot setback, for the curb cut setback, the driveway with some landscaping along the street frontage, the buffer area to the rear, and the buffer area surrounding the parking lot to the rear. So most of the variance relief that's been requested are C variances or waivers. And there's two tests in the municipal land use law for C variances. The first is the C1 standard, that's commonly referred to as a hardship variance. And this is appropriate when a lot's unique shape, topographic conditions, or pre-existing legal structures create a strict... A situation where the strict application of the ordinance results in hardship. The second standard is the C2 standard. And this is justified when the purposes of the municipal land use law are being advanced and the benefits of this advancement outweigh any detriments. It's my opinion that the variances that we're looking at tonight can be granted under both standards. So looking first at the C1 standard. The existing lot is undersized in terms of area for this district. There is no vacant land adjacent available to correct the undersized area. And the new variances that the applicant is requesting all derive of the misundersizing of the lot. The side yard setback variance relief is necessary because the lot is undersized, which combined with the necessary driveway, results in the building extending into the side yard. The lot area combined with the need to provide parking and safe circulation results in slight excess in impervious coverage. And this also results in the need for the requested relief for buffering and setbacks of parking lot as the site lacks the excess area to provide the full buffering and landscaping required. And looking at the C2 standard. The variances and the totality of the site plan advance the purposes of the municipal land use law. Purpose A, promote the public health, safety and general welfare. Purpose E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions and preservation of the environment. Purpose T, to provide sufficient space in appropriate location in the land use law for a variety of uses, in this case, we're looking at residential use, according to its respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. And purpose I, to promote a desired residential environment through creative development and techniques in good civic design and arrangement. It's my opinion that there is no detriment that results from the variances or waivers that the applicant is requesting. The area is an existing condition. And though nonconforming, that five-yard setback proposed is conforming to the underlying R5A zone. So it doesn't conform to the overlay district, but it conforms to the zone which it located, which indicates that this site provides adequate light area and open space to neighboring lots, which is developed with another two-story multifamily structure. The impervious coverage relief that's being requested is not large in scale. It would not result from any detriment to stormwater runoff. And the waivers have all been adequately addressed by the engineer. The benefits of the variances here outweigh the detriments. The benefits include the advancement of those purposes of the municipal land use law and allowing redevelopment of the site in a manner which helps address the need for student housing housing in this area of the city. It's therefore my opinion that no significant detriment results from these variances. The variances would also not impair the intended purpose of your master plan or development ordinance. The uses permitted, the application advances the goals of your master plan and development ordinance by allowing for this site to be redeveloped consistent with the intent of that overlay district. And there's the most recent master plan and the examination report and the subsequent ordinance that recommend eliminating the overlay district, committing this as a conditional use. And the application can still need some of the variances that they're requesting. But the standards would fully, the new standards would fully eliminate the popular variance relief that has been previously requested and the lot distribution. So under those conditions, it's my opinion that special reasons, positive reasons exist for the granting of the requested variances. They could be granted in a manner which would not be detrimental to the public health, safety and general welfare. And it would advance the larger purposes and intent of your master plan and redevelopment ordinance.
Thank you, Allison.
May remember, this board have any questions or comments for this witness?
What are the adjacent uses and surrounding uses?
The area surrounding this is mostly residential, a lot of multifamily. Immediately, you can see right here, this is a larger multifamily structure. And the surrounding area, there's a lot of multifamily student housing units.
Are there any same term?
I didn't do a complete survey because we weren't looking at a use variance, but I wouldn't be surprised if there were.
Is maximum of eight parking spaces?
That's what we're proposing.
Again, the standard is five.
And to say, but you're getting credit for one or two, right? Because even, or is that one?
I think it is, I mean.
Okay.
But it's eight physical spaces on the...
Right, right. Any other questions, comments? Same amount? I'll talk to you.
So we have the definition in the ordinance of something, a front yard, it's yard, comma, front. And basically says that in a front yard, projections or cornices or sort of things that hang over the roof that are attached to the building don't count towards the front setback. So if this is something that's not supported by columns, and if it's sort of just like an eve or something like that, then it would not count towards the front. So it's up to the applicant whether you want to design it with the columns or design it as sort of like a cantilever on it, however you want to proceed, just let us know.
We'll comply with the ordinance.
So no front setback variances?
No, no, and no columns.
Any other questions, comments? Same amount. Mr. Kelso, any other witnesses?
No, that completes our presentation.
At this time, I would like to open it up to the public. Remember, the public wishes to comment on this application, so please come forward.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Stuart Leibman, I'm an attorney from the firm with the name of Blechford-Siegovich. And I represent some New Brunswick people, Beverly and John Vigas. And their residences, excuse me, their properties are at 43, 45 and 47 Morel Street, which is the street that runs behind Race Street or adjacent to me, parallel to it. They've sent me here now. Chair, I haven't had the honor or pleasure of being here before, so I don't know how you do this. Usually, I would get a chance to ask questions and of course examine, you know, other boards and also make a comment. Should I do whatever I want to do now? Just do it together? I don't know how you do this.
It's a pleasure, Mr. Chair. If it's your intention to ask specific questions of the previous lead in this board, what is this? Then that might be the most efficient here.
It is not, actually. What I'd like to, I mean, I had one question and then I wanted to make a statement on behalf of my client and then he's gone.
Okay, good, that sounds good.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. The one question is for Mr. Farrell, and I'm sorry, he and I do work together sometimes, so I hope he doesn't question me when I'm leaving.
I'll stand right here.
And I'd like some protection if that should happen. But this is, it's a simple question, and that is, Mr. Kelso, whose office was there when I went to Rutgers, I think.
Why did that...?
I think that anyway. It said that all of the engineering comments were going to be addressed, but the comments were more questions. There were a bunch of questions in there. I just wanted to know, have they been resolved? For example, there was a question about whether we tested the soils. And there was a question about a pipe size. Has that been concluded? I just want to make sure we're not got flooding issues. That's, I don't want to go over all of them, but I mean, what's happening?
I'll answer and expand upon a little bit of the question. No, they've not been further evaluated. Doing soil testing would be an expense to the applicant at this point that if this application were not successful, they'd rather avoid spending the money on. However, we believe that we can either provide soil testing that would comply with the... That would demonstrate that the design is adequate, or we would be able to modify the design such that we meet the ordinance requirement and the engineer's satisfaction.
So this would not be a condition of the approval? Is that the way?
It is a condition, as we stated previously, that we would supply the request for soil testing is in the engineering memo. We agreed that we would comply with the comments made in the engineering memo. And as a result, we would be providing soil testing or modified design, whatever it may be, in compliance with those comments.
I'm sorry, because I think the expectation is even if those soil tests show there might be a need for a redesign of that system, they have enough information to know that they could do a redesign on the site as the existing plan is being done. That's why we would prepare.
And this is a minor development in accordance with the city standards, not a major, the subject of DEP rules or the city standards for that either. So, you know, the reality is that if they can't provide those items to the satisfaction of the ordinance, they have to come back here and ask for a waiver. So, you know, it's really them proceeding at their own risk because ultimately, we're going to review the final design.
If I may, one more thing. The gradient of the property generally is north-south or northeast to, say, southwest. There's currently a sort of ridge line, you have to look kind of closely. There's currently the gradient between the neighboring properties to the rear of this property. There isn't any runoff from this property going to the neighboring properties to the rear as part of the post-development condition based on the original design requirement. It all runs to the front. It all runs to the ridge.
So in the ordinary course, I would have made a big deal out of that. And I would have said it's the applicant's burden to prove that they meet the standards. Mr. Farrell's certainly a good engineer. And if this is a condition of approval, should this be approved? I think we could live with that. But the point is, I just want to make sure that it is a condition of approval and that if, should this be approved, that the engineer ensures that your local ordinance as it relates to stormwater is satisfied. He's right, obviously, it's not a DEP permit, but you do have a somewhat robust local ordinance. And I would request that it be satisfied. Okay, so if I could just make my comment on behalf of my clients now, I appreciate it. And that is this, the, my clients are not trying to quote, you know, to use an act of killing project. Their belief is that this is too big of a project, and that's the problem they have with this. If they have a problem, well, that is their problem. As you know, because you did it, this board did it, you have a reexamination report this year. And the problem was exhausted. It was probably quite a process to go through what you did. But what's significant about that is that for this zone, you proposed to get rid of the overlay zone. And you proposed to make this a... the overlay zone, and you proposed to make this a conditional approval, and you also reinstated the requirement that the minimum lot size be ten thousand square feet. So, you know, this wasn't, this was just done a few months ago. This isn't something, you know, because these reexaminations have to be done every ten years. I would say it would be something different if it was done in two thousand sixteen, it would still be okay, but this was done just a few months ago, and so presumably, the board understands the inventory of property that's in the area, and presumably, this board believes that ten thousand square feet is the appropriate amount of area that's appropriate for this kind of project, and this is twenty-five percent less. This property, and that's the way it's going to be, there's nothing we can do about that. It's just twenty-five percent less, and nobody can make a figure, it's twenty-five percent less. What I'm suggesting, my client suggests, and because of that, there's some variances that are required as well. I think it's too big. I think that they are, since it's an undersized lot, they should have come in with a project that's this big. I understand that New Brunswick needs more student housing in the Rutgers area. God knows, I could have used it when I was here. But this is, for this size lot, because it's twenty-five percent too small, because this very board readopted that standard just a few months ago, I would suggest that the application should be approved, and that they should come back with a project that's a more moderate size, and that's appropriate for the size, as this board sort of suggested by readopting the ten thousand square feet. If the board felt that that was no longer required, you could go into seventy-five hundred, because a lot of the, seven hundred fifty, because a lot of the properties are, a lot of the properties are seven hundred fifty square feet. But you decided to take the house for this particular project, and you're going to go to a low-rise or medium-rise student housing project. You're the ones that decide that. And so I don't think there's any reason, when this is just left to press, to differ from that. And so for that reason, I would respectfully ask the other my client that this application be denied because it is inconsistent, it is, it doesn't satisfy, it doesn't satisfy the negative criteria, as evidenced by your own, Mr. Flynn, reexamination. It doesn't satisfy it. And so for that reason, respectfully, I believe that this should be denied, and they should come back with something that makes more sense for that size property. So thank you very much for your courtesy.
Thank you, Mr. Kelso.
Just to respond to that, I understand what you're saying, accept that. My client's got the benefit of the time of, the time that the application was filed, and still has an application that is significantly below the permitted height, is significantly below the permitted F A R. It is, the engineering standards that we are looking to not comply with are very minor in nature. We meet the parking requirement, we've developed a plan that is an attractive building that fits within what the expectation is of the city with regard to the type of use and its size. The fact that we can get technical with regard to what your thinking was when you changed the standard. The irony is, with the change of standard that you made, we are getting the benefit of the reduced parking requirement. So there's always a way to look at these things to say, well, you don't meet the standard. But this board, in many instances, with an application, looks at the overall project and looks at what those technical variances are necessary, but at the same time, still look at the overall project and say, this is an upgrade, this is much better in the neighborhood, it's providing state-of-the-art housing in a location that's immediately adjacent to the campus and is a permitted use. So with that, although I respect and understand where Stu is coming from, I think we've more than fairly proved that this is an appropriate application, the appropriate variances to be, to be granted and designed.
Thank you. Any other member of the public who should comment on this application? Please come forward.
Can you please state your names, your last name, for the record?
Charlie Crattonville, K R I T O V I L.
Do you score a front of the whole setup about the truth?
Yes, I do.
You're on.
Good evening, board. You know, at the top of the presentation, there was a reference to the Technical Advisory Committee, the TAC, and I wanted to ask, is there a recording of the TAC meeting?
We don't record the TAC meetings.
Okay, so there's no recording, and as we've established before, you don't let the public attend the TAC. So I think it's unfortunate, you know, no disrespect to the applicant or the witnesses, but, you know, the sort of origin of this application and why it's before this board is something that we just kind of have to take folks' word for, and there's no public record that one can examine to find out how we got here. And I think it's a shame that this board, you know, your subcommittee, the TAC, doesn't allow the public to attend and doesn't apparently record its meetings. So, I don't know, would you be down to change that, Chairman? Would you, you think the TAC should be open to the public? What possible harm could that bring?
Charlie, that's up to the city. That's not up to me. That's up to the legal and the professionals to decide that. It's not up to me.
Who specifically is up to it?
Public comment period, not public question period.
About the application.
Do you have questions about the application or comments about the application?
I think it's relevant. You know, I understand I have a right to question the witnesses, and just wanted to direct a couple of questions at the board, but folks don't want to answer, you don't have to answer, I guess. It would be nice to know whose decision it is, since I thought you're the chairman of the planning board, so.
Charlie, I'm going to say, I don't go to TAC meetings. I'm not there, so I can't make that. That's up to the professionals and the attorneys involved. It's not my decision. So move on, give us any other comments or questions you have, board.
That's all on this application, I'll take it up with the professionals, but I just think, you know, we deserve transparency. There's no harm in having the TAC meetings be public, especially if it's going to make a difference between whether applications go to the planning board or the zoning board, which happened. So there's no record of it. It's a shame, we deserve better.
Thank you. Any other member of the public have any questions, comments on this application? Seeing none, the close.
Just a clarification on the three front doors. I think they're going to address that, I'm not sure. Unless I do.
He did address it, but if. Let me close the public portion first. Public portion of the meeting is out close. Architect, about the three doors, one, three doors instead of one, can you just repeat what you had stated?
Yeah, so basically, for, for safety reasons, we, we thought that it would be better to have three doors so that not twenty people would go into one door in case of emergency, only ten from the second floor on the front, and then split the fives into A and B.
Mr. Chair, you can leave it up to the board. We just brought it up as an issue because just frankly, it looked odd to have a residential building with three front doors on it. So if you want to discuss it, or however you want to deal with it, I'll leave it up to you.
So there are no other issues as far as engineering? Is that just a design?
Usually, in residential, the front door would be to like a lobby, and then from the lobby you go.
I was just going to ask, put up the color rendition, because you can see it's beautiful. I actually do think it looks very nice like that.
The columns are glowing.
Yeah, yeah, columns are glowing. So you'll be able to see it will be as defined as the two doors.
But those, those three doors are central, they're going to be, as we received, right?
Yes, they're going to be, it's in the center, yeah. Yeah, the whole building is symmetrical.
Is that the only means of?
Yes.
So there's nothing, the back, there's no.
The windows are.
Oh, and the building of that height doesn't require fire sweep?
It does not.
It does not? Okay.
It's up to, up to three stories and twenty people, the roof does not require the second roof sweep.
It does not require?
Does not. No means of. The second means of.
You good?
I'm good as you are.
Okay. Any member of the board have any questions? I actually think this is a great improvement for this property. I personally drove past it today, and I think the kids had a little bit of a party over the weekend, their first, second weekend, and all I saw was red solo cups. So not having that, and it was also looked like tents that were beaten up and ripped up from, from the storm this weekend, and it looked like a frat house, you know, but I think this improvement would be tremendous outside the picnic.
These students aren't bad.
Not unless you're, you're going to invite them over to your house. No, but that, like, the whole right-hand side of that building, it's where, it's an open, like, lot, grassy, dirt area, whatever you want to call it, and that's where they had the party, and it was solo cup.
Or maybe.
Yeah.
I also think it's nice to have the fencing around the entire property as opposed to the buffer, because I think that that could get lost with the design that you have here, and this serves a better focus of the vision.
Any other comments? Seeing none, Dan, conditions, please.
Should the board act favorably, following conditions?
He's just giving me a favor on my.
Sorry, we can give you a printout, too.
Oh, I appreciate that. Because that's just not normal, man. And I'm Italian, I'm saying.
Should the board act favorably, following conditions shall apply. Aligning to the terms of the French and Royal Associates Report dated September third, two thousand and twenty-five. Submission of all necessary easements and or cross-access agreements for review and approval by the board attorney and city engineer, bar and by Lieutenant Sam. Payment of site performance bond in an amount viewed and approved by the city engineer. Submission of a site inspection escrow deposit or the engineering inspection fees in an amount captaled pursuant to Title sixty point two four point one six zero. Payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles thirteen point oh four, thirteen point oh eight. Issumption of a road opening order from the city engineer required. Compliance with the terms of the Big Now Planning Report dated September third, two thousand and twenty-five. Mandatory monetary contribution to the city's treaty preservation trust fund in amounts viewed required by Title eight point four eight. Planning review escrow funded for all anticipated post-approval reviews. Payment of any other fees due to the city of New Brunswick relating to the development or use of this project. Payment of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees. Middle Sussex County planning order for waiver. D and R can now commission approval of waiver. Pre-hold soil conservation district approval. Submit engineering site plan to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering members or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Submit architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering members or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Execution of the Title thirty-nine Part B enforcement agreement. All utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense. All on-site utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary approachments into the public right of way shall require city council approval. All construction staging shall be done on-site unless an approachment allowed into the public right of ways with a city council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall allow the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the current public works. Tracking pads shall be installed at all construction exits. Replacing abandoned streets and curbs and sidewalks as per directions to the engineer. For new variances, we have single side guard setback and previous coverage variance. We have outside waivers for landscape buffer width, landscape planting requirement, parking lot setback, didn't miss any.
The curb cut.
Curb cut. What was wrong with the curb?
Less than three feet.
Less than three feet, okay.
From the side, from the side.
From the side, correct.
Well, that's what I had for the, that's the parking lot setback.
There's also the parking lot setback. Generally, there's two. There's a design waiver for the curb cuts, implication of the curb cut, and there's a second one for the parking lot in proximity to a property.
What do you want to call it? Offer setback, curb cut setback.
Got it.
Those are still a few of the conditions that are rated by Mr. Dillings.
I'll say. Yeltsikoff?
Yes.
And Spore-Ludwig?
Yes.
And Camione?
Yes.
And Lopez?
Yes.
And Cardika?
Yes.
All right.
Did you get the goods? Redevelopment plan, new resident two redevelopment plan amendment.
I've already got this hand ready, so we'll get them.
Is all the stuff on my side?
For this? No, but I'll, give me, give me your email, just write your email down up here.
I just to reiterate, this is the new resident two redevelopment plan amendment.
Thank you, for your chair. So this should be relatively brief. The new record redevelopment plan, or new record two redevelopment plan was adopted last November by the city council, which was recently amended, its modifications. I think we were here in June, I don't know if it was adopted, but it's the council in June, or it was in July, June, July, added to its recent amendment. This amendment only makes one modification to the plan, it doesn't change any of the structural components setting up the guidelines for development. It modifies who the redevelopment agency would be as per the plan. So instead of the housing authority, who is the city's typical redevelopment agency, we would be extending and empowering the New Brunswick Parking Authority to be able to act as redevelopment agency for this redevelopment plan, given sort of the nexus of the, since in the previous amendment, we added for the development of the parking deck at the Mayfair lot, and how that is interconnected to Phase One, and to some extent, Phase Two, but only for Phase One, for some apartment could go over there. At some point, we felt that it was prudent to allow the parking authority to act in this capacity for this plan, given the importance that it has for them. And that's really, that's really, that's the only change.
Any other questions, comments on that? Seeing none, seeing none. I'll open it up to the public. Anyone from the public, Charlie, come forward.
Can you just jump in, you're scoring in and the whole nine yards. God, thank you. Charlie Crattonville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. May I ask where in the plan this change is? What page?
Give me a second. I'll wait until your time, because it's kind of urgent, digging for it.
It's all right.
I just don't have a copy of it, I put it on the website.
Sure, you can take your time on that, and I'll go forward with other questions while we're doing that. So, whose idea was this?
City in conjunction with the parking authority.
Okay, so has the parking authority ever been redevelopment agency for any project?
They have not. Added context, I don't know how recent, but it is a relatively recent phenomenon.